Commissioner Yawar?
Here.
Commissioner Lozano?
Here.
Judge Shaw is here. Commissioner Duganet?
Here.
Commissioner Shindel?
Here.
Please join and stand us in open court. State Attorney, please.
Reverend Oliver, we thank you for all of our blessings. Thank you for the freedom we enjoy. We ask that you be with us today as we consider the business of the county. I ask that everyone be respectful in our discourse. We ask that you remember us in our neutral way. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Let's rejoice to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Charlie. For you citizens to be heard, I want to move -- our auditors need to be back in San Antonio. So please, let's let them present the audit so they can go back. You have another appointment. Go ahead, guys.
Judge, commissioners, good seeing you. Couple of things, we handed out the big, big packet. It has the financial statements in there. There's a letter on conduct of audit, but we'll just go through the PowerPoint. And again, ask questions as they come up, but I'll just go through pages. Page two, what's in the annual financial report? Just kind of overview of the items that are in there. The independent auditor's report, and then the various financial statements. Page three, independent auditor's report. What do you hire us for? We perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. This purpose is to form an opinion on the financial statements and determine whether they're in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. Based on the audit that we did, we were issuing an unqualified opinion. That is the best opinion we can give, and basically it says that those financial statements, as they're presented in the bound document, are in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, and that's consistent with what we've been giving the county over the last several years. The management discussion analysis, as we look to the report that will be right after the auditor's opinion, gives a brief overview of the county's fiscal year. So if you don't want to take the time, or you really don't understand the financial statements that are presented, that's a good area to go to and kind of get a feeling of how the county did. It provides both the government-wide information and fund-level information at a good overview level. Just some of the things that are in that management discussion analysis on page five, some of the financial highlights. On the combined full accrual basis that's at your government-wide level, your assets exceed your liabilities by $16 million, of which 3.7 of that is invested in capital You have 948 that are restricted for specific purposes. You got 11.3 million of unrestricted net assets which are available for the county's continued operations. Total net assets for the year increased 6.9 million. Your unrestricted net assets increased 4.5 million from last year. It was a good fiscal year for the county. Page six, again, this is just a broad overview of the financial statements. Your government-wide financial statements, which are on page four and five of the bound document, does provide a broad overview of the county's operations. It's on a full accrual basis, meaning your capital assets and your debt are presented on that statement, as well as all the funds combined into a single reporting line item. And your expenses, they're shown by function. Again, the big thing there is it's full accrual. It's not really how you budget. Page seven, your fund financial statements, this is how you budget, this is how you're kind of used to seeing your monthly financial information. Your governmental funds, you have two major funds, your general fund, which is always a major fund, and your road and bridge fund. And then on that statement, you also have a column for non-major funds, which is a consolidation of all your special revenue funds and your debt service fund. Page eight and nine, just some of the other parts of the financial statements. The notes to the financial statement, they're on pages 15 through 31. They provide more detail on the financial information that's in the statements, and they also summarize your significant accounting policies. Your required supplementary information is your funding progress from Texas County and District Retirement System. That's on page 32. It just shows where your retirement system is and where it's been the last two years. So, gives us some good information on the funding progress of your retirement system. Then on page nine, your supplementary information, we provide a schedule that combines all your special revenue funds and your debt service fund on page 33 through 45. We also provide some budget to actual schedule, which you can see how you did compared to the budget that you moved. On page 10, required communication. We're required to communicate in certain things to you, the commissioners, and us, the independent auditors. Our responsibility is to audit your financials in accordance with generally accepted auditing Significant accounting policies, if you had any changes in your accounting policies, we're required to report that to you. If there were no changes in your accounting policies for the fiscal year. Management judgments and estimates, your financial statements have certain estimates in there, which the actual results may differ from your estimates. The primary one is your accumulated depreciation. It's based on the useful lives of your assets. We've assessed management's reasonableness for their useful lives and concluded that those were reasonable lives for those assets. Difficulties in accounting and performing the audit, if we had any difficulties with management, we're required to report that to you. We did. Management provided us all the information that we needed to perform the audit in accordance with our standards. Disagreements with management, if we disagreed on accounting policies, we were required to report that to you. We had no disagreements. And then auditing journal entries, there were certain journal entries that we encountered during the result of our audit. We posted all those, and they're reflected appropriately in the final financial statement. And then comments and recommendations, we did have one comment. They were related to justice in the pieces one, two, and four. The timing of deposits of their cash receipts were not in accordance with the local government code, and so we've made a comment regarding that. With that...
Number four is new.
Yeah, two is a repeat, and four is new for this hearing. With that, I'll take any questions. Can I stretch my hand?
The, on the receipts, was it just checks and cash in order, or how was that?
I believe it was both cash and checks, yes.
Well, obviously, we can't go through this. Unless you want to sit here for a couple of minutes. If we have any questions, we can give you a call.
Absolutely.
Did you bring cards? I know these guys didn't save them from last year.
I have one.
Sure, one.
I don't even know how to bring them. I'm good.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Can I have, we have two. I want to go to number 21. Is Lee here? I saw Lee walking around. May I have his name?
Judge here.
Thank you. Good morning, Lee. Number 21 is to discuss, approve, disapprove the request from Energy Lodge Kennedy LLC, Texas Limited Liability Company to abandon a 50-foot wide roadway of an abandoned road, commonly known as the old Kennedy Road, Karnes County Road, or KT Road, and then deed without warranty a portion of the abandoned roadway to Energy Lodge Kennedy LLC, six South First Street, Temple, Texas 7651. Survey reflects 0.076 acres of land situated just north of the city of Kennedy in Karnes County, Texas, as being a portion of the old abandoned 50-foot wide county road.
Yes. This is not the first time that the parish reporters deep parked through the neighboring property. Texas Lodge was the part that rode to them from here in December. And this is from there to all the way to 81. And it's where the village put the, this property has been used before by the previous owners a little bit by them, so this is just kind of fair up the title so they can fully develop their, or got a lodge there. They're looking to do maybe some more development, but they look to leave that official area. I was unable to locate the original deed on where Karnes County got the farm. So this is the best way to get it back out of Karnes County ownership. Do y'all have any questions?
I do, I want to ask Mr. ...
Yes, I have one question about it. When this property goes back from the county, do the rental rights already belong for the state, are they going back to the landowner now? Or is that being, any change in that?
It was never a county road, it was an easement. It was never a county road. It was an easement.
There was only an easement, okay.
Yes, sir.
If there was only an easement, I don't see a problem. There's no problem.
No, we already gave the other half.
Yes.
This is the other side.
I don't have a problem with it.
Interesting question.
I'll make the motion to approve the request.
You can say as written.
Yes, as written. No, I'm not going to read it all right. As agenda item presented.
I'll check.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries by to the... Do you have a copy of what you have down there, Marty? Do you possibly have two?
You know what? Let me give...
They can't hear, they can't hear back here at all.
There's a copy machine right back there. You want to run a copy through?
Yep.
Yes, sir. And we're going to go ahead without you. Number 22 is going to be discuss, approve, disapprove, a request by Lucy F. Jalloway Trustee of the Lucy F. Jalloway Trust to abandon the 0.34 acre roadway out of the Don Arasmos Seguin Grant Abstract Number 10 in Karnes County, Texas, and a portion of the county road within the town of Hobson, Karnes County, Texas. And then deed without warranty a portion of the abandoned roadway to Lucy F. Jalloway Trustee of the Lucy F. Jalloway Trust. The abandoned road joins the Jalloway Trust properties, and that is Mr. Jalloway. There you go.
I don't know if you want these. First item is, I just show the power of attorney that I can have the authority to represent my mother in this activity. The document number two, just to give you a visual orientation, is Hobson, town of Hobson. And then document number three is a visual of the actual property. Document number four, and if I'm going too fast, just tell me, slow down.
You're fine.
Document number four is a plat of the block Q, which is her property. And then document number five is a plat of the .34 acres, which is the right away that's in question. Then document number six is the deed without warranty that we're requesting be approved by the commissioners. The .34 acres is a area that has been in place probably prior to World War II. My grandfather purchased this land from Ed Tyner, the druggist in Hobson at that time. This was, he purchased this land in the early 50s. So it's been occupied by our family for about 50 to 60 years, and has never been used as a county road or any kind of upkeep or maintenance. It's been, we always thought it was part of the property. So, I guess that's what we're trying to do, is bring this forward as a, just to get everything set up correctly.
Jeff, when you were up there as county commissioner years and years ago, y'all never did anything to this road?
That road has, and I think Mr. Yarno was also, that road has, there are big mesquite trees in that road. As a young man going to Mr. Fogel's house there, Mike Fogel owned it, I never remember that road being a road there. The road was always there where it's at now, and I've been around for 58 years, so I don't remember the road either.
You don't have to tell us anything.
No.
So there's never been an issue to use that road? They always come around to get to the other one?
No, sir.
Hold on, Brenda wanted to ask.
Can I first tell you where the county road is? Make sure we don't have any one address on that.
No, there's nothing, that road...
Which county road is it though?
What's in front of your mama's house there?
Okay, hold on.
These roads don't have a number.
It's 372, that one, the one in front.
The one in front, but that road does not have a number on it.
Yeah.
Yes, it does. We've got addresses on that road, we need to make sure.
Not that abandoned road, it don't, not that road, that property that runs in front of their house.
The road comes right up by the post office and goes up there where it turns the corner. Who owns the property behind there? Where that abandoned road is? Because I can see here, a line of trees here where the road goes, but who owns the field behind it?
It's not, Crouche.
Crouche, yeah. Yes.
Are they aware, are they aware that we want, that this came up to court?
Yeah, I talked to him there one day on the roads and stuff, and I told him it's coming up. He said that's nothing that concerned him, because his is on the other side of Brushline.
Are we talking about the party agreement, too, that's actually out of the townsite of Hobson?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, there are two addresses down there.
It's just out of the townsite.
I think too, if I remember right, to legally do it, we have to have a written, written paperwork from him, since his attaches to that county road, that he's okay with it. He's the only one, or they're the only ones that attach to that county road behind y'all's property?
We have to post it.
What is, if it's a county road, it has to be posted for two weeks, and then he has to come up. We have to have something written from him, or her, or whoever it may be, that if they're okay with it, that way we can close it. Because if your property was behind there, and we just closed it in between your both properties, we'd be fine. But because someone is adjacent to that, we can't just do that here.
Well, because then it's a right away. It's not an easement. It's not like the one that we just did. It becomes different, you have to publish a public notice. And you know what? Mr. Foster did one last year somewhere, from Reni. You can go back in the records and review it and see how he did it, and that can give you some guidance of...
Okay, all right.
We don't have a problem with it, it's just...
What's Mr. Foster's personal name?
Kenneth.
Yes, you have your, you have your paperwork all in order here for what we need.
Yes.
Okay.
It looks all in order to me.
All right, so we...
I'm going to keep your originals. That way you'll have that.
So, we'll do the posting, and then, whatever format that he did this in, and then go from there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. So sorry about that. That was 22.
Uh huh. Okay, somebody else had a question. Was it you, all right?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm pretty close to the 2015.
Okay, then let's go back to citizens to be heard. Want to restart it?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Karnes County Commission Court has never had an agenda item to approve the motion to hire Denton to borrow, and the other attorneys to provide interview services for Karnes County. Same question was also asked by Commissioner James Lozano, Mr. Hyde, and George Hyde, during his last visit. Mr. Hyde responded, yes, they have a contract. I have reviewed every Karnes County Commission Court agenda since January 2011 to the present. There has never been an agenda item to hire Denton to borrow, and Karnes County has, County has no contract for legal services with Denton to borrow for any type of legal services. During the budget meetings, when the subject was presented to the budget for outside legal counsel, a question was asked, and presiding officer stated, I am entitled to outside legal counsel. In response to her statement, she, as the county judge, is not entitled to outside legal counsel. Karnes County, the commission's court is, if the situation arises. It is my guess that almost all legal services they have been requested by the presiding officer, and that the Karnes County Commission Court has improperly authorized payments to the law for Denton to borrow for between an estimated $70,000 to $100,000. The county auditor's office can provide more accurate accounting. All of those payments for legal services are in fact unauthorized, improper, and possibly fraudulent. As with any other county expenditure, approval must be granted by the commission court contract or incurred any change in charges or services. Because of the outrageous amount I estimate to have been paid to Denton and to borrow, it may be criminal conduct required of the presiding officer. Further, it is my opinion that is also abuse of her office. In addition, the presiding officer has no judicial or statutory authority to request outside legal counsel without the commission's court approval prior to any request for outside legal counsel. The county judge, as with any other elected official, is required to obtain the commission's court approval prior to soliciting or paying for any type of service, and that all of the legal services and payments to Denton and to borrow were improper or illegal, because in my, my opinion, the presiding officer should be paying every dollar to Karnes County. Because of the presiding officer's complete disregard of the law, her continuing display of incompetence, and the continuing discredit she brings upon the judiciary, and the citizens of Karnes County, and to best serve the citizens of Karnes County, Barbara Shaw should resign immediately as a county judge.
Thank you.
Shannon Hall. Morning. One thing I'd like to express, I'm kind of glad we got it started a little bit before we got to speak, because I can tell you, we can't hear anything you are saying or the speaker you're saying. It's totally, we're totally unable to hear back there. So, I don't know if it's a microphone issue or an acoustic issue in here, but if we're going to conduct the future courts in here, we're going to have to do something about the hearing, and you probably might want to check your maximum capacity, too.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Well, it's just facts. One of the things I wanted to address real quickly is, I think that you all should review your abatement guidelines that are being on the agenda item today very clearly. Having looked at those briefly, there's a lot of negligent issues in there for the safety issues of our county, representing our county and not the other end of an abatement issue. We've actually gone into some other abaintments in other counties and found simplified rules, real clear rules, real basic rules, that pertain to the number of people employed in the county, things that are missing in your rough-rack abatement issue, and you really need to read through that lengthy document, wordy document, that has a lot of faults from the eye of the citizens. Also, I wanted to speak to you today about the agenda item concerning the road and bridge. Approximately 45% of Karnes County is occupied by permanent rural tax-paying citizens. Citizens who suffered from bad roads before the Eagle Ford Shell and who paid property taxes will now pay even a larger portion of the tax base in this county, and if you live in rural areas, you know that. Realizing that efforts are being made to obtain money from the state's rainy day fund, which is a portion of the state's severance tax, many amendments and proposals are being put forth the legislature right now to distribute a part of that, part of that severance tax funds back to the counties who are suffering from the adverse conditions of the Eagle Ford Shell with respect to the road and bridges in all of those counties. The idea of obtaining these funds is very questionable, if not unlikely. If you read, and I implore you to read, there is a wonderful document put out by the Railroad Commission. It's a 155-page document that addresses the Eagle Ford Shell. Multiple articles I have found in the Houston Chronicle addressing the Eagle Ford Shell. Here's one on Texas County Progress Magazine. Very informative articles about what the legislation, what is happening, what's being presented with our road and bridges. Per se, the Houston Chronicle article I just read, 5.4 billion is going back into the education budget, 4.5 billion is going into the state's unpaid Medicaid bill. We only have an $8.8 billion surplus. Everybody's asking for it. The idea that they're going to give us a portion of the rainy day fund or the severance tax fund is not looking very positive. Taking these facts...
Ms. Ball, I'm sorry, that's three minutes. Really? Wow. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Ramirez?
Good morning. Basically, what we have been doing, and as our Judge Shaw knows and the commission's court, is we have been, we're a concerned group of citizens that are against the injection well that's, that is right now being presented to the railroad commission. And exactly, I don't know when they're going to make a decision. Our attorneys are going to inform us as to when the railroad commission will be making a decision to determine whether the injection well is going to be permitted. Last night, Mrs. Moy and Eric Opiela and myself presented in front of the energy board in Austin, and they were very receptive to our concerns. We explained to them exactly what's happening down here, and I, you know, I'm kind of sympathetic to Mrs. Hall and her concerns of other issues that have arose due to the Eagle Ford Shell. We, as a county, as a community, I don't think we were prepared for everything that's going in our community. I mean, we have been blessed, however, there are other issues that have, as we, as a group of concerned citizens, we've been expressing to the city and the county of maybe making, maybe coming together as citizens and implementing some kind of city and city rules, county rules. When we presented last night, the energy committee was very receptive, and Representative Lozano out of B County and other representatives were asking us numerous questions regarding this proposed injection well. And they also gave us advice, and they told us that we are more than welcome to, several of them gave us their telephone number to see how they could help us. Mrs. Moy is going to share more information with you all regarding as to what took place last night, but one last comment I'm going to ask, or share, or request. We are on the agenda for April the 1st, February 20th, to see how, to see if the commissioners' court can send a representative a week before the railroad commission makes their decision. They will have a meeting where they will listen to the concerned citizens, the three commissioners, the railroad commissioners will listen to concerned citizens, and we're here to just make y'all aware that we will be returning on April 9th to see if the commissioners' court can select someone to come on our behalf and represent the county. Court can select someone to come on our behalf and represent the county, and that's, Mrs. Moy will share with you.
Dana, when are they expecting the expected date of a decision? Did they give y'all a decision date?
No, no, they will, as y'all are aware, there's so many injection wells that are being permitted, and there's just bombarded, the Railroad Commission has just bombarded with so much work that I'm thinking they're saying towards the end of April, but maybe early May, and, but we, as of right now, don't know that date, but hopefully by April nine, when we come back and ask to see, you know, if there could be some type of representation from the Commissioners' Court. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Moy.
Good morning. I come in here today just to give you a little brief synopsis of what we testified on yesterday. I'll just briefly just give you the idea of what we said. I said, "I want resident of Karnes County and a neighbor to have proposed oil and injection waste well and truck washing station just outside our city that is opposed by numerous groups who put in the city council. It's a high-traffic intersection across from 181 where there's adjacent preschool, Church of Christ, Pentecostal Church, and residential area. We have been blessed by the development of the oil and gas industry in Karnes County and the entire Eagle Ford Shell over the past two years, and we hope that will continue in the future. That said, we wanted to let you know that everything is not great down here. We have a variety of operators in the Shell that range in credibility and experience from legitimate, responsible companies to small fly-by-night operators that come in from outer state that have no concerns for, or really respect for our city, and it seems to tend to make a bad influence and what makes the oil and gas industry look bad. Due to the Texas Supreme Court holding in the 2011 case Railroad Commission versus Texas State for a safe, clean water, the Railroad Commission currently does not have the power to consider the concerns of neighboring landowners and as to whether the use of installation of an oil-filled waste injection well is in a public interest and should be approved. We were asking the committee to consider an amendment, the House Bill 2166, to clarify that the Railroad Commission can consider whether an injection well is in the public interest, especially in cases like ours, where our legislatures, our county, and our city have all expressed concern to the location and operation of this well that is clearly not in the public interest. And as we spoke with them, they really became very concerned about the particular location. We stress that we were not against injection wells per se, but that we do need to have some guidelines, and so this is, you become very weary fighting this battle, but we must, we must continue with this because the legislation is not there to allow the people to help. Even though they want to help, they're tied by their hands, and so the laws must be changed. They must find a way to still let our county continue to grow and flourish, but protect what we've got and we've all worked so hard for. So, we're asking you to, wanted to let you know where we are with this, and we're asking you if you would please help send us a representative from the county up to when we speak with the Railroad Commission the week before we have our hearing date. Several of the representatives spoke last night and asked us if we would let them know when our hearing is coming up because they're very interested to be a part of that. And Eric read a letter from Mayor Tamark last night as was Dana and I testifying, and so I want to tell you and caution you also, when you elect your people that are going to represent you, you need to select those people that are going to be there for you and not just come in the day before election and say, you know, "I'm here," because it is virtually very hard to get in to meet with senators and legislatures, and there's a this and a this, and they send you in a big vicious circle going around until you, you know, it's like, you know, where are we going with this? But you know what? I am not going to give up. I am going because I have a life in this county and I'm not here, and neither is Dana. So, thank you, and please consider when we come back on March, I mean, on April the ninth, please consider sending somebody up there with us, too. It'll make it better for our county, I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moy.
Thank you, Carol.
Benny York.
The purpose of tax abatement is to attract businesses to the county that will provide quality, long-term jobs for our residents and increase tax base. For our tax abatement guidelines and criteria must address the industries that would benefit Karnes County and the citizens of Karnes County. Karnes County's good fortune won't last forever, and we need other industries to sustain the economy's economic viability. A critical component of tax abatement is compliance, and with the abatement tax basis and the ability of Karnes County to recapture those taxes if the companies fail to perform as they promised in their agreement. This court continues to ignore its responsibility to the taxpayers because it is never delegated to responsibility of abatement compliance, so please appoint someone. As taxpayers, it is major concern that our county government has spent thousands of dollars on legal fees related to tax abatement, has approved hundreds and thousands, maybe even millions of dollars in abating taxes. Our county government has never inspected a single facility, and pursuant to the Texas Tax Code, annual inspection is required by statute. As taxpayers, we are checking for compliance of our agricultural and home state exemptions, and if we don't pay our taxes on time, then we're sued and we're collected. So, we must, these guys are getting basically a free tax ride, so until that compliance, we need to make sure that they're in compliance in order to recapture those taxes if they're not. During the commencement of this meeting this past year, Mr. Henderson, our financial advisor, especially at Karnes County, did not need any additional tax abatement at that time. Guidelines and criteria are necessary, however, and if something outstanding comes along, we can legally negotiate with the company. We do not need these guidelines that are currently being promoted by the law firm Denton and Navarro and Judge Shaw. These proposed guidelines have numerous typographical substantive mistakes, and there are questionable modifications. I've given you several examples here, but with the time constraints, you can read them. As Commissioners, you should look at amending the substantive parts of the guidelines. The amount to be invested for tax abatement consideration should be increased, and the number of jobs required for tax abatement consideration needs to be modified. It should reflect a mandatory number of jobs, such as twenty-five percent, which is what Bear County does, to be created and fulfilled by Karnes County residents, not just created, but they must be filled by Karnes County residents. At least a certain percentage of them should be. And then you need to have something on types of salaries, maybe even healthcare benefits such as what Bear County does. Bear County's abatement guidelines are only four pages long. A cover page makes them five pages, and I think that we could come up with something that are very clean, very precise, and they're available on the internet for free, so, the public information, I think we can find something that would make it easier.
That's three minutes.
Thank you.
Justice.
The suggested guidelines are poorly written and by the same law firm who wrote the orders. You should check around and see what other neighbor counties' guidelines contain. It is public information and even available for free on the internet. On March thirteenth, two thousand twelve, the same law firm with full knowledge that our guidelines had expired presented a tax abatement proposal to the Commissioners' Court on behalf of energy transfer partners. Denton and Navarro still say this, says this contact would be classified as illegal because our guidelines expired on February twelfth of two thousand twelve. According to the law firm's view, tax abatement negotiations without current guidelines and criteria should make the court members who participated in the tax negotiations guilty of criminal, criminal must discount them. The law firm continued to negotiate until November thirtieth of two thousand twelve. The court continued to pay their fees. I wonder if it's legal. You should vote no on these proposed guidelines.
Thank you, ma'am.
I signed up to speak also.
The Texas Association of Counties describes the structure of county government this way. The Texas Constitution established a strong system of checks and balances by creating independent elective offices in each county. In Texas, county government delivers services through a variety of elected officials rather than through one central authority. In order to prevent any one office from having too much authority, the Texas Constitution fearfully crafted a system in which none of the county's elected officials is controlled by any other elected official. They answer only to the voters. Several attorney general opinions on various matters state, "An elected county officer occupies a sphere of authority within which another officer may not interfere or usurp." Many years ago, when computers were first being used to impact business, there was much resistance. People felt more comfortable doing things the way they always had, but over time, computers took over many tasks in many places, making these easier and quicker. Then came email. People were uncomfortable at first, how could they be sure that what they were sending was being received? But again, with time, email became the choice of communication for many businesses and individuals. It saves time and can reach many people instantly. Now we have social media. Yes, people create accounts and log on for personal use, communication with family, games, et cetera, but it has also become a noted choice for communication. Updates, newsletters, events, all these things can be posted on social media pages for consumers and citizens to see. Jury cancellations, meetings, food bank times. Alerts can be triggered so that folks can see what's happening immediately. Many companies and businesses are using these to publish office hours, fees, closings, employee recognition, et cetera. Schools are posting calendars, events, and reminders. Many of us do not have access to the county websites, but creating a page and being able to update it frequently is more convenient for us. Yes, schools do certain levels of blocking regarding the internet, but that is mostly for the students. Teachers and administrators are allowed to have more discretion because of their position in this school. We, the elected officials, are adults. We are elected by the citizens to carry out the duties assigned to us by the statutes. The internet is just another resource to use to improve and enhance our services to Karnes County. I agree that there should be a policy in place in the employee handbook that addresses the use of county computers, the internet, et cetera, but it should be left to the department, supervisor, or elected official to monitor their own employees and take the appropriate action as necessary. You, the members of the court, have made many decisions over the course of the last two years that have moved this county forward in numerous ways. Please allow the rest of the elected officials to do this for their respective departments. Barbara, you stated in a debate during your campaign that there were two misconceptions regarding the county judge's position. One of these was that the county judge had, did not have the authority to tell other county officials what to do, but isn't that what you were trying to do today?
Thank you.
I'm going to kind of have to dito on Ms. Hall. It's very difficult to hear back there. I'm a very loud person, so I'm sure everybody can hear me quite well, and we really need to check the occupancy level on this. We already have a fire alarm system that is not hooked up. These thirty persons, I think we have like thirty-five or thirty-six in here right now. Just kind of back up Carol on the social media situation. There is a, there was a webinar last Thursday that I had, because I only listened to, for whatever reason, I couldn't actually see the slideshow on my computer, but they did email it to me from TAC. Social media is very popular right now. It's something that many counties have, but some of them don't have. It's a way to communicate quickly to your citizens. It's also a way to put out any type of information on meetings, the food bank, things like that. I agree with Carol, there needs to be a policy. We did have a policy presented that was not passed a couple of years ago on electronic monitoring on computers, fax machines, postage machines, things like that. I agree, we are adults. If my employee is on Facebook, Twitter, blog for too long of a period of a time, she will be disciplined, but that's my job to do that. So I really think that the county does need to have a policy, but you also need to let us do our job, so that's what we're likely to do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
If y'all want to copy this, I can get it to you. It's not a very good copy, it's in fact pretty well, but it does promote social media. Mr. Bassman.
Good morning. I want to speak to the number eight. Last year, at budget time, I filed my budget request, and I was granted by the file. I did not know, and therefore, as I was concerned, I had a budget that I had asked for. I had gone to, I did take off about three days last year, and I went, my wife and I and our children all met in New York, which is either here or there. In the process, and I have Bluetooth in my vehicle, so when I get a call, I can hear it. I had a call from the judge saying that I needed to, she wanted me to, and was telling me I didn't fire my assistant, the attorney, who was in New York. I had three calls from her, and I did, I said, finally, I said, "No, she's my employee. I would not do that." When I added in, "You can't make me," that was a bad thing for me to do because my office was supposed to be run by me, so apparently I threw down the gauntlet and I said, "You can't make me." So when I got back, my budget for the county attorney assistant was cut to zero. Who cut it? I don't know. I suspect. The only one that could have legally cut it would be her. I don't think that happened unless you all just tell him I ended it. I then asked, I sent a letter to the judge asking to be placed on the agenda because I had to defend myself against a frivolous lawsuit or frivolous action by the contempt of court, and you all remember that. I am entitled to be reimbursed for that. The judge did not put me on the agenda, but I got a nice letter from people by the name of Denton, Navarro, Rocha, and Bernoff, and it's dated December the seventh, Earl Harbor Day, and it says, "Mr. Bassman, on behalf of the county judge, I am responding to your request for replacement of certain items on the agenda with Karnes County Commissioners' Court. These items raise legal and factual issues that must be addressed prior to formal placement on the agenda of the Commissioners' Court." What this says to me is, I got to convince the law firm that I need to be before you all. That's not their job. Your job is to keep me away from you or let me back, and I have a legitimate claim. The second thing I asked was, because of the change in my budget item for her, if I asked to be replaced on the agenda in the same letter, to get that straightened out. I will read you the response that I received. Now the judge has put it back on the agenda to do something about it. Can you go ahead and do whatever you want, but when you read this from your counsel, or when you hear this, you may want to change your mind. Second, you are requesting an amendment to the budget of the office of county attorney.
Mr. Bassman, I'm sorry, that's three minutes.
What's your one and only answer, Seth?
No, we're done. It's three minutes. You can have pocketed opinions if you like.
I want to compliment y'all far. In one fell swoop, you come over here, you put us in a place where we're illegally here.
That's enough, Mr. Bassman.
Finish reading what you have, if you can. You can't stay on.
No, it's three minutes.
No, but I have the right to read what you have. What do you mean, "I don't have the right"? You cannot tell me I have the right or I don't.
Mr. Vidore. We will keep ordering here, and I'm the presiding officer, and everybody has three minutes.
No, but you're trying to tell me that I have the right. I don't want to argue, I'm sorry, folks, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're going to number six. The next item is to discuss approve/disapprove.
I apologize.
The next, Mr. Vidore, there's a zero tolerance policy and no one is exempt. Discuss approve/disapprove assisting the Corn City Fire Department with insurance for the rescue truck and for the new tanker being purchased for the county, and that's Mr. Muller. Hey, Charlie.
How you doing, Charlie?
Good morning. I want to thank y'all for the opportunity to be here this morning and address the court. I'm here today because the last time this subject was brought up, I was homesick, was not able to be here to provide what I feel like is the pertinent information that you may need in considering the funding of the insurance on the rescue truck. I'd like to once again ask y'all to consider that funding on that truck, and also I'm going to ask for funding on another truck that's in the future and ask y'all to consider placing these, this funding into your future budget so it can be handled. I'll take you back in time to nineteen eighty-six when the Corn City Rotary Club did a fundraiser and purchased a set of rescue tools that was known by most people as the Jaws of Life. Those tools were donated to the county. They were placed in an old retired ambulance that was parked here behind the sheriff's office with the understanding that county deputies would operate these tools at incidents. A year and a half later, in September nineteen eighty-seven, we were asked by the county to take over the operation of these tools, and we accepted, and they were brought to us along with the old ambulance. We were to operate the tools, and return the county would ride the ambulance, provide the maintenance on the ambulance and the insurance. In nineteen ninety, when we received a grant to buy- In 1990, when we received a grant to buy a new 1990 one-ton rescue truck, we came back to Commissioners' Court. We asked them to please provide $700 per year in insurance and cause to help us operate these truck. In exchange for that, the old ambulance, the maintenance on it, the insurance on it, everything else from that went away, so it's kind of a wash. Instead of paying for that, they would pay for this, and they agreed. In 2004, when we needed a larger rescue truck because of all the added equipment that came along, we came back to the county, and we asked for the payment to be increased to $1,200, and it was. Now, I don't know if that approval came through the proper channels, but I do know that we did come in good faith. We came and properly asked that this be done, and it was done for many years. Now here, nine years later, the $1,200 came into question. I don't know what was said at the last meeting, as I said, I was not here, but I felt like I needed to come and bring y'all some of this information, help you better understand where this started out and how we got to where we're at, and ask y'all to once again consider doing this to help us better protect the citizens of Karnes County. After all, it was the county that came to us in the first place and asked us to take over this operation and made some promises to us. We have not backed down on our promised topics, this equipment, and last year alone, we were called out for forty-two different rescue-related incidents. In addition, I'm sure you've heard that we're in the process of acquiring a 3,000-gallon water tanker truck to provide much-needed water supply in rural areas of the county. With few exceptions, there are basically no hydrants out in the county area for fire protection purposes. This has been needed for many years, and thanks in part to our local energy companies that are helping us to get their financial support and helping us to get this project rolling, we will soon have this truck available in Karnes County. We are actually advertising for bids at this time. And with the added support of our local citizens who are making some very generous donations, we do see this coming to pass very quickly. We have been working with all these departments in the county, this is not just the Corn City Fire Department thing. The oil companies came to us with this proposal. They asked us to operate it for all of the county, and we agreed to do that. We, a lot of the reason we were selected is because we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit car federation, which allows them to legally make donations for this cause, both through the energy companies and through the local donors. But we've been working with all the departments in the county to design and build a truck that will meet the needs of all of the departments. It's not just our plan, it's a plan that's supported by everybody. What I would like to ask y'all to do today is to consider the approval of the funds for the rescue truck and also for this new tanker that's going to be used for all of Karnes County. We did address this issue at a meeting with all of the department heads, and they've also pledged their support to this. I've gotten some figures together on the insurance on the rescue truck, along with the cost of insuring over $100,000 worth of equipment that is on that truck. The cost of that is approximately $1,032. The insurance estimate, and it's only an estimate on that truck, not knowing the exact final cost, will be, the insurance estimate on that truck is approximately $1,153 for a total of $2,185. And like I said, at this time, I'd just like to ask y'all to consider the approval of this so that it can be placed in your future budgets. And ask that it be ongoing, not a annual comeback for more.
Are you looking at $2185 total?
That's the total we project, and that's an estimate.
I just, I wanna add, I don't know if any of y'all talked to Mr. Pippen or Don. I did talk to Mr. Pippen, I talked to him the other day, and I, when this was on the agenda, I handed him down, and he did reiterate the fact that we had made a gentleman's agreement between you, and then we just backed out.
No, it was actually in the court minutes in 1990 to approve the $700. The $1,200 when we came back, I honestly do not know if that ever went to Commissioners' Court, or if it was just said, yes, we will do it. But even if the $1,200 was not officially approved in a, in a meeting, the $700 agreement should have still been binding and should have never gone away. We do have court documents to that effect. But we did come in good faith, we did ask, we did explain the need, and it was approved. And I don't understand why, if they felt like it wasn't properly done, why didn't it become properly done instead of being completely thrown out? And if it was thrown out, why didn't the $700 still stand? But there again, I wasn't here, I don't know what Mr. Pippen said, I don't know.
He got put out and said the city had just paid it.
Yeah, I don't know what the agreement was. That's, that's gone, all we're asking is, let's look into the future and see if we can do something to take care of this.
The county does pay $1,200 a year of tour, it's titled, "Jaws of Life," when it was split.
Up until it was discontinued a year ago, yes.
No, we still pay monthly, $100 a month.
A $100 a month agreement, though, is for maintenance on the tool. That was a completely separate issue that was addressed back in 2000. We needed to do maintenance on the rescue tools that is owned by the county. We came to County Commissioners, we asked them to approve the maintenance on the tools, which at that time in 2000 was about $1,000. They asked us to do the same preventative maintenance every two or three years, so we came, asked them to pay for that funding, they agreed to pay for it, and established a deal to pay us $100 per month to do maintenance in the future so we would not have to come back every month. Last year, end of last year, we did that same preventative maintenance. We had to also replace one 100-foot hose on the rescue truck. The cost of that maintenance was $4,065. If we do that every two or three years, and have $100 a month, do you think we're coming out?
I'm just telling you what it's been.
That has nothing to do with insurance.
That's right. But there has not been anything on record or motion as long as I've been here, so therefore the court needs to take appropriate action. What we can do, Charlie, is you're looking for, come budget time. Are you looking for anybody now? If you do that, we have to amend some.
I'm not asking you to.
You're just making sure we're all on this same page.
I have no problem.
Budget time, so you don't get thrown off the bus.
I'm looking at the future. You can set a budget, any emergency amendments from coming up, we'll be fine.
You know, I think anybody might need the Jaws of Life. I mean, you go all over the county, it's not like you cover Corn City.
Yes.
You go everywhere.
And both of these trucks are countywide.
Countywide.
We operate them, but they are run countywide, because not every department needs all of us, so we agreed to do it for the whole county.
And I agree with you, Charlie, because the budget, the upcoming budget year, we need to look at, in my opinion, we need to look at funding the insurance as well as maybe increasing the maintenance. Don't amount to the repair of the jaws. And also, I think of the county as a whole, and the county has set precedent back, what year, Charlie? Do they deny, do you, the county gave a?
In 1980, 1990, when they actually.
Prior to the truck, for fire truck for Karnes County.
No, which deal?
The original.
1987, when.
When they were in the back twenties or thirties, they actually, the county provided funding for.
Back in 1941, the county actually, or 41, 42, 43, they actually bought.
But I already think too, in upcoming budget year, we need to look at probably somehow helping fund this new water tanker truck, because it's, it's countywide issue, and the cities are providing funding for their departments and stuff, and we're using a lot of the resources out in the county. And I think in the upcoming budget year, we need to look at doing some additional funding for that.
If we run sharp and come back and talk about that at that time, we'll, well, companies have pledged $150,000. We're taking bids, we're expecting bids, hopefully not to exceed $225,000. Local citizens are coming forward. We feel like before the end of this year, we will have the money to do that, but if we do run sharp, our people, our fire department heads, our members have agreed that we will do whatever it takes. If we run sharp, we will find the money if that can happen. Y'all know from our fundraiser in 1996 for a new brush truck, and from 2002 and 2003 to buy new rescue truck, our guys aren't gonna back down, they're gonna see it through again. It's not just a dream, it's gonna be a reality.
If I make a motion that we approve, I have a say.
For $2185 during budget time?
Yes.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
We're gonna, we're approving something for the next budget.
That's what they're asking. But, but, you know, that's just an estimate, though, that.
It's an estimate, yeah.
But just so he'll know, we don't back out on any of that.
No, yeah, I understand. But it's, Herb, is Herb here? Herb, there you are. Okay, we're, we're doing this for the next budget year, and I'm 100%, I mean, I know they need it and everything, so all right, if we go ahead and make this motion now, even though it's not gonna be put into the next budget here, that's fine.
Well, it's not a legal thing, it's a business. There's nothing, I mean.
No, because we'll make.
It's technically a notation.
It's a notation, there's no legal. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries, five zero.
Thank y'all for your time, thank you.
Be careful, blessings to you. Comes in to do a body count. Number seven is discuss approve/disapprove James T. Phillips, non-paid deputy reserve constable precinct number four, Arthur Fernando Rios. Hello, Fernando.
Good morning.
How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good to see you.
Very busy. Recent I'm here, and I'm trying to put James Troy Phillips as a deputy constable, non-paid. He had been here before, before he went to the sheriff's office and then went to the city of Poughkeepsie. And I'm trying to bring him back over here. And basically, he's non-paid, he rides with me, whenever we do something on a special occasion, anything else that presides. I know you're familiar with James, I'm not sure if y'all ever met the young man. He's pretty solid, he's got all his training, he's got some background.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve James T. Phillips for non-paid deputy reserve constable for Mr. Rios.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries, five zero. Thank you, Fernando. Tell Troy, thank you, James. Number eight is discussion action regarding dispersment of county funds from the county attorney, line item, substitute county attorney and assistant county attorney. I put this on the agenda as requested by Mr. Hancock, actually. He came to me wanting to work through his budget. Mr. Hancock, why don't you come up here and talk with us? And he gave me a copy of his budget. Why don't y'all, let me see this here. Hand this out. It's what in the package, because it's research.
Is this? It's marine.
Kill a tree.
It's a forest.
Now, lost my agenda. If I said it, I'd take my agenda. Where did I do with my agenda? See if I handed one of y'all my agenda. Here it is.
Do you have it?
Yes. If y'all will look up me, look with me on, there's a top page with a bill from Betty Yoder, you'll turn the page. That's not what we're discussing right now. What we're discussing is, Mr. Hancock had a negative balance on a line item of assistant county attorney for $1,125. He asked me where that came from, I don't know, I can't answer that question. You wanna know why Mr. Hancock came to me, or how this became a battle? You can look and see, you have local four of the local government code, which says, I'm the county judge, I'm the budget officer, I'm supposed to notice, even though there's an assistant county attorney line item in the budget.
You're talking for this year?
By or I can explain that.
But if you look at the budget, on page 15, there is no line item for assistant county This is the budget from the clerk's office that was filed. There's a sign. And there was no, nothing in there.
The reason that expenditure was made for that line item is that's for services rendered from the current budget through September 30th, and payroll was October 3rd, or something along that line. That is why there is $1,125 expense from that line item, because of the services rendered by Mrs. Yoder in the prior fiscal year. When auditors completed the audit, they make journal entries accruing wages back to the fiscal year. There has not been, out of this fiscal year budget, money expended for a assistant county attorney. There has been for a substitute county attorney, and there is another pending invoice that will be in the next bill cycle for a substitute county attorney. But the court, at the time of the budget adoption, voted not to have an assistant county attorney, where it had been motioned before, but it was changed to a substitute county attorney, because Barbara reiterated that she was the only one that had the authority to approve a substitute county attorney.
Well, I got you the statute on that, too. Because it goes back to county attorney, because we came to court last time, and there was a bill presented by Betty Yoder, and this goes back to the substitute council attorney is missing $400. Herb told me he got a bill from Betty that he said he could not approve, and then I asked the law in court, and she said she, that Herb did approve it, and Herb gave me a copy saying he didn't approve it.
Herb had told me verbally to put it back in the next cycle, which I did. It was faxed to him, I don't know if it's inadvertent that it was not approved, but that check has not been issued, it is still currently in the possession of the county auditor's office.
And if you look and see what the statute says on appointing notes, you got your, it's all in here, your practice county and special from Westlaw, your, another letter from Denton Navarro, it was about substitute county attorney and whatever. And I don't think I specifically said aye, what I told you is, a judge can only appoint, and they can only appoint, and it tells you in code why they can appoint. If, if the DA is absent from the district, or the county attorney is absent from the county, the judge can appoint somebody to fill in their position. And I did, Mr. Hancock did go somewhere, but when I called him, I asked him, I said, are you coming in today? He says, no, he was somewhere far away. And I said, are you in Karnes County today? And he says, no. I said, can you be back today? He said, no. And we had to do a protective hearing that day, and so I said, is it okay if I appoint somebody to come take your place? And he said, yes. And I appointed Lee. Lee hasn't turned his back there, he did that, and presented us with a bill of exactly what took place that day. And so, that's where it comes down to, we need to figure out what's going on with these bills and whatever. Mr. Hancock, if you'll say it's a discussion action in regard for dispersments, Mr. Hancock at one point in time asked me for a forensic audit of his account, so he knew exactly what he had, is that true?
I don't, I don't have an idea.
And so, he should be in this position. So if you'll look back at all this statute and all this law, the only reason we need to get it done right, and you'll see that we can, on page seven of the local, 111 of the local government codes, we can make changes in the budget for county purposes, as long as they're for county purposes. On section 81, 81002, it says, "The Commissioners' Court will not vote or consent to make a payment of county funds except for a lawful purpose." I do not know what judge appointed anybody for these fees. What judge appointed you?
You did.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did. What the, what the situation was, if you want to, if you want to make an explanation for the bill.
That's enough, that's, I'm not talking to, I'm not gonna argue with the court, but I asked.
You ask this question, and you don't let her respond? Can you answer it?
The bill was created because we have juvenile hearings, and we have JP hearings at the same time.
Take her out.
And we needed two prosecutors to handle it on that two or three days in December. I know we called the day, because it's been several months since I've seen the invoice, but the day was, and Jamie came to you and told you that, that, that one of these prosecutors, or the two chunnels that were in there, and one of them was a 10-year-old with a gun. Remember that?
I guarantee you, that's enough. I have never appointed you, or never would appoint you for any of that. And, so I'm done here. But anyway, if we can get an affidavit, it's a lawful purpose to approve that bill, it can be done. I have never, ever appointed Betty. When I appointed Lee, he knew I appointed him, he showed up, and we worked together. So, do you want a forensic audit of your budget? Is that what you're asking for today?
I just wanna know what money I've got. I wanna be able to let the paper look at what money I've spent, and how it's been spent. And I want it in a way where I can understand what I've got, in order that I don't go over a line item. And these items are lined out, and I have to stay within a budget that's given to me from last year, and that's the only objective that I have, it's just that. And there's no way I can tell what's going on as far as the budget is concerned. If you look at the one that's on the website, it says one thing. If you looked at the expenditures and the way they're set out, it says something else. I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I'm just saying that we have got to get, or I have got to get a budget that I can recognize and that I can follow, and know what I'm spending. and that I can follow, and know what I'm spending. And I don't know that.
So, are you requesting a forensic audit?
I would like to at least defend myself.
No. Mr. Vodari, that's enough. We're going on, and we're doing this. If you want to come do this, I'm not going to argue with y'all. This is Mr. Hancock's budget, and this is what we're doing. We're fixing it for Mr. Hancock.
I did have a copy of the letter that says, "You can't do that," from your lawyers.
Mr. Vodari.
Don't throw me out.
So, are you asking for a forensic audit? So, do you want us to put another item on the agenda for a forensic audit?
You have to, I think you have to amend the budget, and I don't know if we can do that today. It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
And I would like to address it when it's on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hancock. We'll put it on the next agenda for you.
I have a question.
Yes?
Okay, I'm looking at this budget. Now, let's say county attorney June McCourt, that's what we're talking about, right? That's the amount, that's part of the...
Isn't that a salary supplement? County attorney, who gets a salary supplement for June McCourt?
Mrs. Yoder.
That's where the amount is $1,200.
Oh, that one, yeah. It says June McCourt.
Yeah, but look, what I'm saying is, I was looking at this, last year, there was like $9,000 that was...
Because you had $25,000 county attorney budget last year, the last fiscal year.
Thought I'd ask.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, sir.
Number nine is to discuss, approve, disapprove, developing, adopting a policy to block supplement works such as Facebook and county computers on county courts.
Are you taking an action, isn't it?
Yes. We will request a verdict at the next one, with Mr. Hancock's request. I put the social media thing on there, and one of the numerous reasons that I put it on there is everybody says that they're very budget-conscious. We are paying numerous dollars in flicker viruses for the computer, for Jeff to sit here all day and figure out where computers those are coming from. We've talked about this in the past. A lot of the other counties already have it going. Yes, some counties might use it. We don't have a Karnes County Facebook page. We don't have anything like that. The deal is, it's not an individual office. Every office is a controller of their own software, which is an exact true statement. But this social media comes through one server, and it's called Karnes County. And that bill comes to Karnes County. It doesn't, there's not individual servers, so it has nothing to do with an individual office. And the bill comes to Karnes County. I verify it through DODs. I verify it through everybody else.
So, if you gave that off, let each department handle that, well, in other words, it all comes into the county, so there's no budget for that, right?
It's all, it's all a county server. It comes to the county. And that's why I get all the flicker notices, and that's why I know there are so many.
But those also come from emails. Are we going to be banned from email as well? Because it's not just...
I'm not answering more questions. I'm going to go...
But you have to know the facts before you can...
We wish to show the last...
Yes.
Okay. Facebook is used by many departments. San Antonio PD prosecuted many harassment cases for individuals. If our department is banned from accessing Facebook, I won't access it from here to get a warrant signed. If that young lady walks out of my department and gets shot and killed because of family violence, my hands are cleaner because I can't access it anymore. As a law enforcement entity, it is a tool we use to prosecute. Please, don't put family violence victims in danger just because of the social media website. I have printed up things of, "I will kill you. I will shoot your family. I will do everything I can to harm you." If that is blocked from our computers, I won't be able to download it. Won't be able to walk the warrant from my office. And I'm not going to use my personal computer, because that's official business. So, that is my conception of it, and we need to allow it.
And may law enforcement send everyone else. A lot of counties allow law enforcement to have it, and actually provide law enforcement their own server, so that they may control that server to be able to actually do more than that, because the sheriff has tools that he can install on a computer that cannot be installed on anybody else's computer, that he can network with the DA, and he can do all that other kind of stuff. And it'd probably be in the best interest at some point in time to give the sheriff's department their own server. So, he will have those tools. I totally agree with you. Plan on talking to you about that at budget time, to help you get all that stuff that you need to get.
I just have one thing. If you're going to pursue some kind of a blocking software, which leads into where you can not block certain sites...
It's just a sonic wall.
Okay, I use every software. If we have maintenance problems on our mapping computer, I can call them up. They open up a chat note with, that's social media, so that if we're loading something, they can get off the phone line. I can get off the phone line and answer questions. But as soon as my computer's ready to go, I can let them know in chat that, "Hey, everything's loaded. Can we please proceed?" So, I know at least our office uses that for Esri. ACOG is short-staffed right now. They're also using some of those similar items. I don't know of some of the other offices. I know of the clerk's office, there's networking to get to Hill Country software, to where they can see our computer. We need to make sure that's not blocked.
Hill Country cannot be blocked. Nothing authorized by your department can be blocked. Nothing authorized by your department can be blocked. If it comes to the Karnes County server, your software has nothing to do with it. None whatsoever.
It's on the server.
Okay, so if you don't have Facebook, none of your programs are?
No, 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 no. I'm not talking about... The software that you use on the computer is on the server. And so, are you saying if we authorize Facebook to do...
No, 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 no. We authorize that. We don't, the county does not authorize Facebook. We are getting major control of it. We are spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in virus protection, because people are opening stuff they should not be opening.
And then that includes emails, because we opened one from listserv, and it did the same thing. So, are you going to block listserv as well?
No, but Facebook, Facebook and social media is the thing blocked on many county computers. Pete went to ACOG yesterday, and what was the big discussion?
All right, I went, I went, social media training, we had social media training class at Sentinel last year, and they said, "Be careful about using these. Don't abuse it, et cetera." And then some of them said, "There's locks." Yesterday, at ACOG, I had lunch with four judges and one county commissioner. And I brought up this, well, we have, going to have Facebook. They want to know what's happening in Karnes County. So, well, we're going to have Facebook discussion in Commissioner's Court tomorrow. All of them said, "We have it blocked. Facebook is blocked." Four other judges and one county commissioner. So...
But you can go find forums that have it open, because I did. There's clerk's offices that, different clerk's offices are putting on there when juries are canceled. There's all kinds of information that you can put out there. And if you have the virus protection, whether you have Facebook or email, you can still get a virus. But we have a sonic wall up already, and it is blocking things by default, like guns, sex, porn. It's blocking all those already.
But the other thing...
And that's where the viruses are coming from. They do it through emails.
When you, when we go to risk management training, you're not supposed to use county computers for personal use, anyway.
But it's not personal use. It's Facebook for county business.
And we have a webpage that, we have a webpage that we pay for. Karnes County doesn't have a Facebook page or a Twitter page.
How many people can post on that webpage?
Anybody can. You just call Brittany Lane and get a number. We pay for it. Anybody can have an email address. That belongs to the county. Yes, that, they're set up through by...
And you came into office, you moved that over, and I don't...
Your lady posts on it, right? She posts your stuff.
I post on it, because you're the one that decided all of a sudden that you had both the agendas and whatnot on it, and your email...
Anybody can do it. Anybody can do it.
No, no. It's...
Yes.
You can get, you can go to training, if you want to be on it. And actually, the county clerk's supposed to be on it. She's supposed to post the budget. That's our...
No, I post it, but not on the internet.
And that's not what the code says, but...
It's the population.
And I'm not, I'm not, anybody can get on our county website. Anybody.
You can get on it to look at it. There's only administrative...
Time out. Time out. I've heard a lot of stuff today about this Facebook. I'm starting to get really irritated. One, there's something that was said earlier that makes common sense to me, is we need to get a Facebook policy in place, a social media policy. I think we need to get a policy in place. Go ahead and block everything, in my opinion, temporarily till we get a policy in place, and then go back and do it. You can let law enforcement have their policy, have their server, whatever the case may be. I have yet to see any Facebook page for the county at all that says, "I don't think..." You have one. I don't think the auditor has one. I don't think the district clerk has one to do that. I don't, unless y'all, if y'all have a page. I don't think the tax office has a page. I don't think EMS has a page. Nobody, I know the sheriff's office, I don't think you have a page. Only one I think has a page for Facebook in the county is KNDP. They have a Facebook page. And all theirs is strictly for, I believe, this information. And I agree with Facebook for social media information. I agree with that. But we talked about that here a while back, about posture doing something like that.
Not blocking.
But...
Facebook pages, but not blocking.
But...
You can't block everything, because you don't know what I need to do to bind my office. You're trying to bind my office. It's a personal issue, and nothing back off.
It's not going to block anything.
Yes, it will.
It already does.
Yes, it will.
You tested it. You tested it when Jeff put it in.
I did, huh?
Yes, you did. Okay, then Jeff lies to me.
The sonic wall is up, and it, and it's already blocking the things that people, by accident...
It can block Facebook. It can just block Facebook and social media. That is it. And that comes to Karnes County. That does not block anybody's ability to do their job. Nobody has to have Facebook to do their job.
It's a resource.
It's a resource. Tax has a webpage. That's how I learned about the HR and social media webpage through their Facebook page. The Texas Jail Sanders has a Facebook page. A lot of your sheriff's department has a Facebook page. Again, it goes back to us being adults and supervising our employees. If they are on Facebook, Twitter, Flickr, blogs, you've probably known more on social media than I do, sweetie, Instagram, then that's where our job and supervisors come in.
Still good.
The agenda I've been set is to have a policy. We have a policy management committee. What's the point about policy management committee? If you guys are going to do everything that you feel like you need to do.
So, may I ask you something? Back last year, you said that you were going to visit the offices, and you did. You've been working about coming around and asking questions. Before you guys make a decision on this, would you come around and ask some questions again, and let us show you what you do, and what, what the potential problem is with blocking this, and what our plans are to do? Would you at least do that? You don't have to make a decision today, but at least let us show you these things.
How does Bear County run, Tom Green County run, Travis County run, Guadalupe County run, Full Mount County run, when they all have Facebook blocked? How do they run? I mean, are they that much smarter than us, that they can work around Facebook?
Are we not doing our jobs?
This is social media. This is first step.
If we're not doing our job, the citizens will have to inform us, some of us back here about a year, that we're not doing our job.
Ross even told me, he said, "You know, it's blocked for us." Allison Bassman, especially, told me most people block it, and they're able to work.
Judge, yesterday I did go, I met with offices, the heads, some employees and everything. I just got some information on why we shouldn't do that. And with your permission, I read this. Every elected department head has control of how their office and personnel are to be managed. It is not, it is not the job or the responsibility of the county jail, county commissioner, or his court to micromanage anyone's office, which I agree with that. Twitter, Facebook, Google, Yahoo, et cetera, are used to assist in obtaining information for questions that any and all county offices may have concerning matters within or related to their office. Also said, "Social communications have been used in assisting the public to find answers to their questions, especially when they do not have said resources readily available to them." Many county offices and employees have email accounts that are through Yahoo, Hotmail, various other internet providers. These are used to send and receive emails, information, court filings, and news from other offices, court coordination, judges, law enforcement agencies, et cetera. In addition to sending out or receiving information via conventional mailouts, and listservs, Twitter, and Facebook are now being utilized in distributing and receiving valuable information. It is up to the, it is up, most, most people have this to say, it is up to a department head to decide how many, how any and all forms of social media are to be managed within their office. And I agree with that.
I agree with that, too, but I still think we need to have a policy in place before that is put into, before social media is really put in place. Should we make a policy before we bump it?
Yes.
Yes.
In the case of emergency, like the...
Correct.
Commandant.
More people are going to...
Mr. Yoder, would you like to...
Yes, Texans, if you look up the manual on for computers and other... Policy, Texas Workforce Division, there it states, Texas law requires, that first, there must be a policy in place before you can, a computer policy, before a decision like this is made. That's number one. Number two, once that policy is in place, it's required by state law that every individual has to sign it.
Every employer.
Every employer has to sign it.
CM, okay, that's enough. But we're going to take legal advice from our attorneys, and not from every citizen in there. And I know you're not an attorney. So, we're going to go ahead and move forward. If y'all want to do something, then...
We have no attorneys.
Mr. Vodari, where are you?
They've never been hired by county.
Mr. Vodari, where are you? That is enough.
We have no attorneys.
If, if somebody wants to fire Dittner Varo and others, please put it on the agenda. We didn't fire Joe when we came into office. We didn't fire anybody else.
Yeah, hire, fire.
So, any, anything that was done by the previous court is still done. We're not going to go and do everything they did. And so, if anybody has a problem with that, or they want to do something with it, you bring it up, and let's do something with it. Until then, they're our legal authority. Them and Mr. Hancock, nobody else. The county has no contractual obligation with the former county attorney or his career assistant. They're going to move forward. Mr. Vodari, that's enough of him. I'm done. Please. There's a zero tolerance needs to go. It's been enough. Who are we going now?
You're going to have to rest. You're going to have to rest.
We're going to be in recess until this situation is taken care of.
Aren't you glad you came?
Uh-uh.
It just never ends. You ever wonder why I stayed as long as I did?
Yeah.
And I tried to retire three times. Was talked out of it each time, because I was a nice kid, and I get shit out. You put that in the paper.
Okay.
It just never ends. It never ends.
Constantly.
Oh, thank you.
Also, I did all the research. Ditten and Varo have never been hired.
I remember when that came up, I guess, about a year ago.
So, you can't call somebody you haven't called. What they have done in the past, this whole thing is illegal.
Yeah, I remember Mr.... They said they had some sort of a verbal agreement or something.
Verbal agreement, I...
He should know that.
He does know that. But I have all the research at home. I mean, I have every commissioner's court, every one of them.
Appreciate it.